All right, it's six o'clock.
All right.
I'm gonna call this meeting to order.
There you go.
Okay?
No wonder, he really is in charge here.
Yeah, he is.
So, this, it's 6:01 now, we're on reorganization of the select board. Welcome all to the next, the first meeting after town meeting. And I need to take a nomination for chair of the select board the next year, the ensuing year.
I nominate Eric Remick.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of Eric Remick being the chair for the ensuing year?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye. Aye? Any ayes?
No.
Abstain.
Here's your hammer.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Next up, we need a, we need a vice chair. Can we have a nomination?
Open to nominations.
Who is it now? It's the same. Kaylee?
Currently, it's currently me, yeah.
Second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of Kaylee serving as vice chair? Please say, please say aye.
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 Abstain.
You don't want to be Terry.
This is America. You told yourself.
You can.
It's America.
But you don't have to.
No, you don't have to. And I bet a lot of you don't. Or should, I should say.
The next is approval of minutes from our last regular meeting, which was March 2nd. And, wait. Oh, and the public hearing, which was right before that on March 2nd. And we had a special select board meeting with HED on March 13th.
I motion we approve the March 2nd regular board meeting minutes and the public hearing board meeting minutes. Should we separate the two dates?
Sure.
I don't know if it makes sense.
That's fine. I thought those minutes looked good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, how about the, does anybody want to move the, approving the special select board?
So who was the chair of the select board when you had that meeting with the HED?
Eric was.
Oh yeah, it's interesting, huh? Technically, I wasn't. Yeah?
All's well. It ends well. But yeah.
My second.
We made it through.
It's a little in-between thing, yeah.
Yeah, you're right. I was thinking about that after.
She was there.
No, I was second.
Breaking official, Sherry wasn't there?
I wasn't there.
We can strike the chair if you'd like, on the minutes.
I don't think it matters, I just.
Yeah, you're right though.
It's an interesting thing, we've never done that before.
No. No.
I doubt it matters much.
Do you want us?
Other than the words in there, because if you had.
Strike the chair.
Yeah, strike the chair.
Do you want to amend your motion to strike the chair?
Yes, I amend a motion to strike the chair.
Can we have a second for the amendment?
Second.
All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Needs to be a non-binary select person situation.
Okay, all right.
I don't think that's the proper terminology, but.
You get what I'm saying? You should be thinking, I was trying to think, God, it's one of them big words.
There is hope. And, okay, so that, so we have the amended, the motion to approve those minutes by striking the word chair. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Can I ask you a really quick question about this?
You may.
For those of us who weren't here, could we at some point have a, just because we had so much executive session? I don't know what happened during.
It was almost all executive session, yes. So yes, so we can.
At some point, we can recap?
Yes.
Okay, great.
That would need to be an executive session.
Yeah.
As long as we can have, we can designate one person to.
Tell her.
Yeah.
Eric.
I can.
And it doesn't need, it's fine, we can just have a conversation.
What, are we designating you?
Either you or.
Yeah, or, I'm happy to do it, or you can do it.
We can do it separately.
Should we just add just that on this meeting, so it gets done and.
Kat's already at the bag, I behave.
Sorry, what?
It would be actually.
That's all I really need to know.
I can update them.
Oh, you want to add an executive session?
Actually, I just did some stuff.
Let's, so Sherry, okay, next up is set a just agenda additions. We have one to, I see an email here, to consider authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract with Carrington Community Development Services for the Bylaw Modernization Grant Project.
So we need to remove item number eight and replace it with that.
They didn't get that, there are changes to us.
Oh.
New years?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll add that. Sherry?
I have a couple of things, the, I don't know if it happens during, when we do the appointments, or if I need to add a just, but there's no need for an alternate representative for Solid Waste District.
Let's do that when we do the appointments.
Okay, and then we missed the downtown partnership appointments. I'm, I'm the representative from the select board.
Let's do that when we do the appointments.
Okay, so.
But you were gonna say, we could add a executive session.
And then I was gonna say, we could add an executive session to discuss the meeting with HED.
Just a debriefs on the meeting with HED, for those who want to stay and that will be.
To tonight, because it's gonna be a quick meeting.
Yep. Sounds good, let's, so we'll do that after old business, we'll add.
And then, I don't know what the VSA blah blah blah.
Big US game.
Three, three fifteen.
Is it three fifteen? It's in our, it's in the minutes.
VSA thirteen.
Three thirteen. Three thirteen. Legal, legal map.
To include the town manager.
Yep. Okay, any other changes, additions, subtraction, subtractions? All in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, next is the appointments, so Sherry has already said that we don't need an alternate to the Central Vermont Solid Waste District.
I think we had one when we had someone who didn't get to go to those meetings, but I attend all the meetings. I haven't, I think I've missed one in three years, so we shouldn't have to worry about that.
And then, and you wanted to add.
We need to, according to the MOU with the Hardwick Downtown Partnership, there are appointed representatives of town staff and select board to serve on the downtown partnership board. I'm the select board representative, and Tracy Martin and Hopey David Upson are the staff representatives on the downtown select board, or downtown partnership, according to our bylaws.
Got it.
We also need to add myself as the equity committee representative.
Are you not on there?
The alternate that we could use is an alternate for the NVDA, because I have a hard time getting to those sometimes.
Not an alternate, a town representative for NVDA.
Well, I mean, I'm willing to try, but if there was an alternate, somebody that I could ask, you know, that we can work with.
I did that once and never made a meeting, so I don't think.
It's really hard to make them, the way they set them up, but they do more of them on Zoom now, but I still have trouble with. And sometimes they are on the same night as we have select boards, so it's impossible.
Well.
How often do they need?
Somebody else wants to do it.
How often do they need?
I should take at least one from team.
You're on there.
Yeah, that's an easy one.
Yeah, you get paid to do that.
If you want me to do the NVDA thing, I'll give it a shot.
I think it's.
Sherry does a lot.
It's once a quarter.
I don't know if it's quarterly. I think it's quarterly.
I'll do it.
And then they have like a annual meeting.
Some are interested in the topic, so I'll try to improve my.
If somebody could actually go, I mean, that's why I took it on, because I thought I could actually go, because they do do things that we miss out on.
Yep.
Like those TIF funds that we've been missing out on, because nobody talks about it ever.
Yeah, I agree. I can at least pay attention, yes.
And there's a prerequisite though, Danny.
What's that?
You gotta know your town email address, off the top of your head.
Well, I do now. But I still can't make it work, so.
So we're changing that?
Yes, we'll change that. Yep.
We're, um.
Danny.
Sherry does a lot of stuff.
You can just do it when you get to it, why don't we just start at the top and work our way down?
Well, rather than like having a motion for each one, I was hoping to just read this slate.
Okay.
Well, do you want me to motion and then read them all?
I don't mind reading them all, and if, but.
You could say so, no?
Yeah, so, but is that everything? Oh, I had a question about the, okay, so I'm the rep for the, I'm gonna be the rep for La Moya Valley Rail Trail Committee, and so that's not the old La Moya Valley Rail Trail Committee that was vast, that's the new one, the town one we created. Okay.
You're on, but you didn't really want to be, continue to be on it, did you?
I just was feeling like there was three of us going to a lot of meetings.
It makes it difficult.
And they should all be warned, and it is better if there are not three of us going.
You know, I could, there's no conflict between representing the select board and representing the historical society.
No.
I think it might make sense for WIS to do that, because the depot is gonna become.
Right.
The trailhead.
Yeah, and that's, your, our interests align there.
You guys, shameless. You're tricking elderly ladies.
Oh.
Taking advantage of.
We totally just did too.
You're too double-teaming her.
It is near the depot.
We have a job, man. We're terrible bunch.
I also noticed, so the town health officer has to be done through. Town health officer has to be done through the state.
That's a good way to do it.
That's, we're stuck with that.
It's not good the way it is, but it's, what's gonna happen if we don't do anything anyway?
What type, you know, that, when I think of these things sometimes, like we had before, I try to think of what type of person would have interest in that, maybe through their profession, or.
Yep.
You know, I'm not sure what that job, is semi enforcement?
The town health officer.
Oh, right.
So, so somebody who's maybe a social worker, or.
Be great for Matt Rito.
Yep, or.
Somebody who's connected with.
You need somebody, somebody who's connected, resources to resources would be great. Because ultimately, that's what's gonna fix the problem.
Well, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff. It's buried.
When it gets to, when it gets to the health officer stage, generally it's the situation where it's there's some sort of enforcement that needs.
Not really, it's, it's really just interpreting state statute and documenting.
And paying attention to emails and being able to respond.
It's about the process, for the town.
Are you volunteering?
Absolutely not.
Eric makes a good health officer. With his deputy.
Yes, I need, I need deputy dog over here.
Yeah, I think you're a help, too.
We've done.
I always hoped in the state was gonna actually do something, but they haven't.
They have plans to, with the rental stuff.
That would be super helpful.
Well, they passed a law.
Yeah.
Ooh.
Yep.
That's always so helpful, because they put no teeth in it.
Well, there's teeth, there's no one who can force it.
All right, so I'm gonna read through this list. Wait, why do we only have one person appointed to conservation commission? That's just a new appointment.
This is a new appointment, yeah.
Okay, but that's not the.
She's gonna be on shortly.
Right, right.
So go slow.
All right, so I'm just gonna read through this slate, and hopefully at the end of it, somebody will make a motion to approve this slate as read. So, David Upson Jr. as our civil defense emergency management coordinator, Bill Chidsey as the town energy coordinator, Sherry Cornish as the Central Vermont Solid Waste District rep, Larry Hamill as the town service officer, Wiz Dow as the agent to convey real estate, Sherry Cornish as board rep to sign warrants, Sherry Cornish as NECKARTS board rep, Paul Fix as NEK Communication Union District rep, Eric Remick as the Hardwick Trails Committee rep, Wiz Dow as the La Moya Valley Rail Trail Committee rep, David Upson Jr. as the town safety officer, Maya McCoy as the town website coordinator, Danny Hale as the town representative for NVDA, Danny Hale as the Hardwick Woodbury Rail Trail rep, Eric Remick as a town health officer, David Upson Jr. as a deputy health officer.
Hold on, I, let's wait on Erin, because she's gonna be coming on.
All right, we'll wait on that.
Yes.
Sherry Cornish as select board rep to the town downtown partnership, Tracy Martin as a, as a staff representative to downtown partnership, David Upson Jr. as a staff representative to the downtown partnership, Kaylee Galloway-Kane as the equity committee rep.
I motion to approve the town appointments as stated.
Second.
Any discussion, more discussions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, so that's a lot of appointments, thank you.
Then we'll just come back to that one.
We'll come back to Erin when she comes, she's coming on Zoom shortly.
Okay, got it. Next is establish the select board calendar, there was a proposed calendar circulated that's essentially the same calendar. It's Thursday, the first and third, Thursdays at 6:00 PM, except we skipped the week through July 4th. What's your pleasure? Yeah. Okay.
My second.
Where we always talk about whether we're gonna start at 6:00 PM, and I always see if we.
We can start later.
Can start later, but I get it, I get it.
Right, okay.
Thank you, Sherry.
Yes, we appreciate it.
And we might as well start at 5:30 if you want.
Ooh, don't tempt me.
3:30 would be good.
Yeah, it would work a lot better for the office.
Yeah.
No.
5:30 would be tough.
5:30 would be tough, okay.
And it may be for somebody that, yeah.
Okay. Leave it at six.
Makes it hard for people to attend.
Don't fix it if it isn't broken.
So.
It's only broken for me.
So we have a motion and a second to approve this schedule as written.
Will we approve this, this schedule as written?
Don't we?
Second.
Yeah.
Third.
We're all, all right.
Let's do it.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next is select board to consider approval of various liquor licenses, I think there are three of them.
Actually, because we could add four that came in late yesterday afternoon, is Hardwick House Pizza, a renewal for their first class.
House of Pizza for first class?
Yeah.
I can motion to approve a second class license for Tops Market LLC, Buffalo Mountain Co-op Inc., Keg of Glory LLC, DBA Bird's Song Beer and Wine, and a first class for Hardwick House of Pizza.
Second.
And do we have any issues for many of these folks?
They're all renewals, no new.
Awesome. All in favor of approving liquor licenses, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
This house of pizza needed donut license.
Do they have donuts?
They're gonna start some, yeah.
Doing breakfast.
Ooh, good to know.
Oh, nice.
Donuts and breakfast pizzas.
Good to know.
Yeah, I saw that.
Something new and fancy.
Sorry, I lost my place. Item four, select board to consider approval of the town of Hardwick budget vote resolution. We had a little hiccup in the, in the.
Procedure.
Procedure, thank you.
Move it.
I suppose, I'm surprised ours isn't here to help us with this.
She didn't need to.
She apologized.
So, okay.
So, this is a town of Hard, this is a resolution, just, I mean, the town met, we had a good attendance at our town meeting, people voted on the, I thought it was pretty good attendance.
Hundred people?
I thought it was.
Hundred forty-seven, right?
One forty-seven.
Could've been worse.
Yeah.
Could've been better, and we will be better next year.
Yes, we will.
Yeah, so we're, we will try to be better next year.
I'm just, I'm not gonna say it's good, that's all.
Okay, all right, you're right. No, you're right.
I think if we moved town meeting to the evening, we'd have a better turnout.
I don't think that's worked for all towns that have done it.
Or we can.
Or we have a week-long town meeting festivity.
Festival.
Yeah.
All right, there we go. So, but wait, just back to this resolution, so in the course of the meeting, there was, we voted on the budget without first having a motion to vote on the budget. So, here's, so we can, by statute, we can kind of correct this error, or smooth it out, or something, by passing a resolution. So, it's the town of Hardwick budget vote resolution, shall, shall the action taken at the meeting of this town, Hardwick, held on Tuesday, March 7th, 2023, in spite of the fact that the motion to approve the budget was omitted, and any act or action of the municipal officers or agents pursuant thereto be readopted, ratified, and confirmed. And that's 17 P S A 22662.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All, any discussion?
Well, you didn't read that exactly the same, doesn't matter.
It's, you changed it.
There was a slight change.
Ours is different, okay.
Changed the word.
You said approve versus discuss, okay.
Because I thought that was more appropriate for what we were voting on.
Okay, I went, yeah.
Yep.
It's all right, I just.
Yeah, I know.
I was following along.
Good.
You were paying attention.
Well done. All right, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Which one should we sign?
This one.
Can we go back to Erin?
We can go back to Erin, I also just noticed, we need to.
We approved of that, we just need a signature.
Okay, we didn't actually approve the resolution for an adopt, for the, having Paul represent us for the CUD, but we did approve him in our slate of appointments.
We appointed him.
Yeah.
There's, there's another thing we have to do with, with that, at a future meeting, I got today.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I'd like, just for the, just for the minutes, could this other, a resolution to, for the annual appointment of a representative to the NEK Broadband Governing Board, and I'm just gonna skip to the now therefore be a resolved, that the select board of the town of Hardwick hereby appoints the following representative and one or more alternates to the governing board, the NEK Broadband, for terms of one year each, and we have Representative Paul Fix, and, I mean, that's looking for my signature to attest, so do we have a motion to approve that resolution?
So, second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Now, let's swing back to.
That was wrong.
Where was that?
It was just in my list, on my stat.
Okay. Is that what you sent today?
It was in the.
So.
It was in the Google docs, I saw it there.
Yes.
Are you Erin Rosenthal? So we have you, we had a letter of interest for joining the Conservation Commission, and we just did a bunch of appointments, but we'll just spin back to.
So you're fine.
No, you're good. You're totally good.
You were like a star, because you showed up. It's a big thing.
We're gonna appoint you to a couple other things.
Yeah, that's what protects you from us appointing you to a couple other things, showing up.
So, do we wanna hear from Erin first, since she's here?
So, yeah, nice letter, thank you. Do you wanna just say, do you wanna say hello, or anything about yourself that you wanna share?
Hello, everyone. I'm Erin Rosenthal, I live in Matthew, we live in our country's Goldberg. We have two kids, and I, Rachel King's been inviting me to join the commission, and I attended a couple meetings, and I'm truly interested in the work that they're doing, and I think I've been kind of brought on board because there's interest in organizing events for kids, of which I have some experience and interest in, so I decided to learn more, and I'm really looking forward to the meeting with Matthew about the imagery, and making an effort to get it out to as many Hardwick residents as we can, because it seems that.
Is that the natural resource inventory?
Yes.
Is that including all of Hardwick lands?
Whatever lands they have permission to be on, collective permission.
HED?
Yep.
Yeah. Just to pull it together, what the state reports have already given us, too.
Again, I don't know if this project is gonna be all encompassing with all the lands, but they're gonna do as much as they can.
Are we headed in a direction to get our lands into some sort of forestry management, the Hardwick Collective lands?
I don't know, that'd be a cool.
Yeah, that'd be a good question for the Conservation Commission.
It would, actually, if that's.
There are lands, all of our land is managed at all in a productive forest manner at this point.
Right.
Well, I would like to motion to appoint Erin Rosenthal to the Conservation Commission.
Second.
Any other comments or questions for Erin?
Are there terms, OP D O, or is it just? Okay.
Like.
Good question.
It's a like term.
I don't remember, we could.
I don't think they define. That's internal.
She's a star, she's a.
All right. So all in favor of appointing Erin to the Conservation Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much for, for coming, but mostly for volunteering for the Conservation Commission.
So happy to meet you.
You can, but you don't have to.
No, you have to come to every select board.
Only for the first three years.
They tell you that part?
You're free to go.
Grab, grab a home entash on your way out.
Oh yeah, they're very good.
That's it.
Next is, item five, select board to consider approving a banner application for Circus Murcus Banner to be hung on Welkut Street, June 24th to July 1, and August 11th to August 19th, which corresponds with dates for their shows in Greensboro.
I, I move that we approve the request to hang our banners. So there's no conflict with the, no. Somebody's checked that, right?
With the proper.
Because we approved a banner before.
Amanda's nodding.
The banner.
Yeah, so we're good.
The banner schedule is without.
So we got a motion.
Okay.
Second, approved.
Okay, any other, any other discussion?
What am I gonna do?
There's two locations for banners.
Oh.
Yes.
Okay.
That's true, on the same road, even. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next is item six, select board to consider approval of water and sewer connections for the Judavine Library Expansion Project, which is interesting, because the Judavine's already connected, but.
It's because they're dramatically increasing their.
Their toilets?
Yeah.
From one that you can't use to some that you can.
More that you can use, with, and a kitchen sink.
Have you been to a Gudavine bathroom?
Um, I, I
Have you been to a Gudavine bathroom?
Yeah, not yet, yeah, it's downstairs, right?
Yeah, but you can use it.
I can't.
No, that's true, a lot of people just can't, right?
I'd, I'd like to, um, suggest that we waive the fee, the fifteen hundred dollar fee
What?
For water and sewer.
What's that?
Because we're gonna pay ourselves?
Because it's gonna show up in our budget.
Because, because the connection is already made into our
Oh, that's true, too.
Yeah.
I'll go with that, I think.
Okay. And we'd just be charging ourselves.
Uh, so, could we, uh, so, this is, you're gonna
But just as far into the, um, we should start the, um, you know, the, the cost of, that haven't been looked at.
The what?
The cost of this expansion beyond the construction cost.
You're saying, even though we're not gonna charge, that we should keep, we should keep track of these costs?
Yes, that's right, that still costs someone else, I'd bet. Like, when Jen, people complained about, yes, but then we're gonna have twice as much place to heat, twice as much space to clean, twice as, we're gonna need twice as much, you know, twice as much, twice as much. So, we should keep just that in back of our minds, that's a lot, the naysayers are gonna be naysayers until you prove them wrong, right? So, I'm not saying this to make it a big number, I'm saying, if we keep track of it, we'll know that it's not that big.
Mm-hmm.
Like, my heating costs in my office, I built the shop, it's big, and everybody's all freaked out about the cost, but the actual thirty dollars a month heating difference
Isn't as much.
You know, it wasn't the three hundred dollars a month that all the naysayers said it was gonna be, so
I think
That just made me think of that, huh?
I think, I, and I could be wrong, but I think they have a fairly new steam boiler in there with capacity for the addition.
I hope so, but
And I don't think it's gonna be a huge increase.
But I'm just posing what the naysayers were used
No, you're right.
Yeah, absolutely.
If we could track that afterwards and say, well, this is actually how much we're costing the electricity
PO it because you built
Right.
Library.
Yep.
I'd like a motion to approve a water sewer connection for the Judevine Library Expansion Project.
Oh, they're two separate things, a water and a sewer connection.
Oh, a water and a sewer connection.
Waste water, I like to say.
Oh, water and wastewater, there we go.
I'd like to motion to approve a water and wastewater connection for the Judevine Library Expansion Project, and, uh, waive the normal fee for that.
And you want, have the, do you want authorize the town manager to sign that?
And I authorize the town manager to sign that.
Okay.
Second?
We're a good group.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Speaking of five of us, we generally
Are you aye?
Yes.
Um, okay, so that's everyone, motion carries. Mr. Upson, passing to you. Um, is good, uh, next, item seven, select board to certify the annual financial plan for Vermont Agency of Transportation for Highway State Aid, and that was the thing that tells how much money we're spending on our roads, essentially, which is quite a bit.
Make a motion that we approve the annual financial plan for Y AOT Highway State Aid.
Second?
And can we just note that the total, um, that we're spending, estimated to spend is, oh, no, is it that?
This is the income, this is expenses?
Oh, the expenses, that we're planning on
Right, we're spending one point five, six, five?
Yeah, one point five, six, five million dollars.
And we're getting one point seven, four, one, four.
Yeah. Okay, so, just noted, and we had a motion and a second on that.
That one point five is ours, our, our kick in, not the one point seven.
Well, yeah, we put in the lion's share.
Yes, by five, yeah.
Okay, so, um, and that's at least equivalent to, uh, it needs to be at least greater than three hundred dollars per mile of class one, two, and three highways, which I'm sure it is. Alright, all in favor of approving the annual financial plan as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, looks like the
Did we have a motion in a second for that?
We did, that was just a while ago.
Okay.
Fades from memory. Um, and then next, we, item eight is, um, to, um, select board to consider authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract with Carrington Community Development Services for the bylaw modernization grant project not to exceed twenty thousand, three hundred dollars.
Salute.
Ooh.
Oh, ho, warm season.
Yeah, it's warming up in here.
It woke up. So, I got it, Danny seconded it.
I got it with my breath.
Chimney poppies.
Yeah.
Chimney poppies, see.
Um, okay, so, um,
Yeah, Heather Carrington.
Heather Carrington, so she's the same person who did our downtown designation work.
Evaluation.
And so she's So, this is a contract with her again to do, help us with the bylaw modernization.
Yeah, that we also received a grant to support.
She was the only applicant.
But we think she's pretty darn great.
But it's kinda handy, because she did a good job with that other one, and she knows us now.
Yeah.
She knows a lot, yeah, she knows a lot about us, yeah.
Alright, so we had a motion and a second. Um, any other discussion besides me rattling on? All in favor, um, of, uh, authorizing the town manager to enter into the contract with Carrington Community Development Services, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Select board reports?
I'll just repeat that the townhouse has a film on March thirty-first, it's a free event, uh, it's a screening of The Farm Boy, that George Woodard, who's a Vermonter, um, it's his film.
He's, he's from Waterbury, right?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Um,
Oh, I haven't seen that, I wanna see that.
So, they're starting, they're gonna start putting up posters and stuff, uh, this week, but it's on March thirty-first at the townhouse.
And that's a Saturday.
It's a Saturday or Friday night?
I bet it's
Oh, Friday, could be, yeah, you're right, Friday.
I think it's a Friday night, I think it's at like six, or six thirty, something like that.
Thirty-first, Friday.
If you really don't see anything about it, you can go on the townhouse website and take a look at the calendar, it'll be on there. Um, yeah, that's happening, so, um, yeah.
And a quick report, the Equity Committee is having a listening session this Sunday, um, from twelve thirty to two at the Buffalo Mountain Market, um, it's open to everybody, and the focus is going to be on equity and food, so talking about, um, hopes, challenges for food and food insecurity in our community, and it'll be in the little cafe area.
Great.
The downtown partnership will be represented by myself and Tracy Martin on Wednesday, the twenty-second, at the State House, Downtown Day at the State House.
It's a pretty building.
What's the date today?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
Tomorrow is St. Patrick's Day.
I'm supposed to be here today.
Whoops.
Ice cream social.
You can still get there.
No, three o'clock.
Oh, not by three o'clock.
Whoops.
I'll say that the Yellow Barn Project is proceeding apace, meaning
This year?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, this year, we are very close to signing our construction contract that
Gonna potentially break ground in May.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, yeah.
Hold you to it.
Is this old business?
No, it's true, so
Are we on old business or new business?
It's like, it's like
Oh, new business?
Um, well, it's kind of new business, old business, put that together.
Yeah, new business, old business.
Maybe at our next meeting, we can, I think it'd be great to talk about, um, the gravel pit in our next meeting, and some of the things that we heard from the community, um, and to thank everybody for voting for that bond, but I think we have some work to do in terms of the next steps for that project.
Does everybody know that that bond passed?
I don't, sure.
But what did, what did it
I mean, normally it would come out because of that, but I didn't
Well, the, well, the bond passed, which is great, but we heard a lot about, are there ways that we can use some of our, because our general fund has more money than our policy, um,
Fund balance.
Our fund balance, sorry, we heard that maybe we could use some of our fund balance.
Right, but didn't I hear that in, actually, in reality, by the end of this fiscal year, our fund balance is gonna be where it's supposed to be, already?
Well, maybe, maybe we could just have
So, let's, let's have that discussion.
Right.
And with the numbers.
Because there was also some question about how much we committed to the pedestrian bridge, so maybe
I don't think there was, I was just confused, and I was corrected.
It's a hundred thousand.
Okay. Um, and then, so that, maybe we can have that conversation in our next meeting, and then, um, at some point, I don't think it necessarily has to be at our next meeting, but I think it would, we must have a conversation about how to make town meeting more accessible to the community, so, I don't know if we wanna invite Rose to that, or a few other people, but I don't think it has to be
I think that could happen in like December.
Yeah, perfect.
Um, but I think that it's worth, work, like, I love that Rose brought that up, and it, I talked to her after the meeting, and it sounded like she's, and I, I said, we didn't, you know, we don't set the time and place until we send out the warning, so we have until then, and if there, if there's something we could do that would help increase participation, and we should try to work on that, and she seems interested in that, and I think, you know, we can, if, if she's willing to work on it, I'm willing to work with her, I think we probably all are willing to work with her, but I don't know that we need to discuss it until we, well, we can start now, but we don't need to discuss it at a select board meeting until there's something to discuss.
Yep.
Right, what about the, one of these committees, to work out what, what their, you know, like, the bugs are? Like, what are we trying to accomplish there? Who says, is it gonna be us? Any good to decide if we're gonna do it at night or not? We're not gonna know, five of us don't know whether that's gonna be better or worse, but what do people want, Saturday, what, you know?
It would be worth polling the community.
I would hate to start too late, is all I'm getting at.
We could send out a poll.
You know what I'm saying, I hate to start
Are you saying that we should have like a little ad hoc committee or subcommittee that works on this?
Um, I, I don't care, but you know what I'm saying, I
Cause there, you're saying that there are steps to take.
We figure out, you know.
Yep.
We should, I think, even before trying to solicit community input, it would be good to look at what other communities have done, because other communities have changed, um, and see, see what they've done, what has worked and what hasn't worked.
Good job for a little committee that has interest in this.
Sounds like we need a little committee.
Do you want a little, a little ad hoc committee?
Well, if you're interested in it
Yeah, let's do that, and then they could bring it back to us.
We can make a much better decision.
Yeah. So, could we
I'd be happy to work on that.
You would? That'd be lovely.
Like you said, just check and see what has worked for other towns before we pretend we know what's best.
Sounds like Rose would be a great asset.
Yeah, so maybe if you're willing, and, and Rose probably is, then maybe at our next meeting, we could appoint you guys to a little ad hoc committee.
I'm sure Rose is.
But there might be others as well.
She was the one who arranged to have Susan Clark come in, and, who has written about this extensively, um, and has worked with, I think Frank Bryan, um, yeah, so I'm sure she would be willing to work. She's not here to defend herself, we can just appoint her.
We could. Let's do it next time.
Okay.
That's my feeling.
So, maybe I'll check with her.
Yeah.
Although the only other old business is, for a future meeting soon, is, I don't know if there's anything else we need to do with the cemetery policies that you brought to us before town meeting with?
Oh, are we hiring a sexton?
Yeah, we are.
Okay.
But the select board doesn't do that, that's the town
No, that's town
Oh, that's good.
Town manager.
So, we don't really need to do anything.
Next week.
Okay, awesome.
So, that is totally in hand, you're following, great. That'd be really nice, actually. Means that we're, we're gonna get our, uh
Could you cross that over with the town health officer? You may as well throw the dog catcher badge in there, too.
This is getting up the dogs, can I give a reminder that dog licenses are due April third?
Speak to the camera.
Dog licenses are due by April third. We currently have thirty-eight dogs registered.
I'll bet there are more dogs in town than that.
Get out of my bag.
And in order to register, you have to have, uh, current
Rabies.
Rabies and
Fee up until April third is nine dollars, just paid in neuter, thirteen, if they're not, and then the fee will go up after April third.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What are your favorite jobs, I'm sure?
I think there's about thirty-eight dogs in there.
You think so?
I haven't counted them, there's thirty-eight dogs in the trailer park.
So, the next, um, old business is to remind people that through the weekend, I think through the weekend, this, the survey with the park concepts for people to do the survey
Oh, it's still up.
And give their feedback is on the town website, it's the first item on that page, and you click it, and you can see the different, the two different concepts, and give your feedback, and
Looks like there's a ton of information at town meeting.
It, it did pretty well, we haven't had a lot since then, so, we're hoping to get just, you know, as many more as possible. You don't necessarily have to be a Hardwick voter, but it's nice to, if you spend a lot of time downtown, we wanna hear from you. Here's a QR code, do you wanna, do the QR code?
OP, I thought you had an old business. You're up.
Um, I got a conceptual drawing from Mo Valley Ford for the parking and the solar canopy, um, I, I will, I'll share it with you. Um, it's, it was presented during the Yellow Barn meeting, and, you know, there was some discussion, but, um, ultimately, it's
People
To the select board, if we're generally in favor of parking in that area.
Have we, have, do we, have we developed any kind of policy around selling town property yet?
I thought we had state statutes.
So, we can just do that, and, and we don't include the public in any way?
I think there
It does include the public.
We could.
There are three ways to do it in the pub, right?
Yeah.
And, isn't that right? And there, and the public has an opportunity in each of the ways.
I'm just thinking of how Ori's, you know, claimed that nobody knows what's happening anymore, so, I just would wanna make sure that people did know.
We should include the public on it, but, but we don't have to.
Well, they know, we, they always have a
All three of them don't, one of them doesn't include the public.
Yeah, it does, because the, you can, they have thirty days to
It's only, the one that doesn't include the public, it's, it's like in the event of an emergency.
Right, I understand that, but I could say, just, we have choices in how to do it already.
Correct, yeah.
Three choices.
Yeah.
Well, why don't we make it an agenda item for our next meeting, and then we can choose which option
Okay.
That we want to do, because basically, our choice is to make it available for the public.
Well, I don't know, is, I think there's three options for three specifically, you know, for three different reasons, you would use a different option for a different reason. For example, the, the no public option is, emergency, we need it, town, the public good is more important than yours, or whatever. So, I, that's the way I read it, was that this, we don't necessarily need to pick one, because these are the towns, this is the select board's three choices to choose from for every sale. So, you could, don't need to necessarily handle every one the same,
No.
But you need to handle every one in one of these three ways. And then, and we can, if everyone thinks we need to choose one, we can, but then we're just, essentially, we're narrowing it down for the future.
Yeah, we wanna just go
Selling business.
Right.
I, I don't think we need to overcomplicate it, as long as we include the public, that's
Yep.
I mean, anything that we sell, from my opinion, should be, you know, fair market value, bid process, I would be good with any of these things. You know what I'm saying, that's, I think, what's more important than
It'd be great to make it an actual item on a future agenda.
Yes, I was just looking up the statutes, if I can hold up.
Um, alright, so let's do that.
And I'll share the conceptual drawings.
Yeah, please do. Um, just, uh, preview the conceptual drawings, I think there are fourteen EV charging spots and twelve just regular spots. And in that place where the farmer's market used to be, in front of the wastewater plant, in there drawn.
And a solar canopy.
Solar canopy over the fourteen EV charging spots.
On the trail side, or the
Yes.
Those are on the trail side.
Yeah.
So, potential shade for the trail.
I think it's far enough away that there isn't.
It's not.
Shade for people to get under if it's
Oh.
It's out of the right of way.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, what I'm saying
Yeah, you could duck under there if it's hot.
If it's hotter, grass.
Yep.
Probably find people picnicking there after a while.
Yeah, well, by the time I get, you know, you're forty miles into it, it's time for a break.
Alright, um, can we, could I have a motion to go into executive session
So, who?[1758.32]